I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if everybody could stand if you can and join in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Pendleton.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Senate, roll call, please.
Counselor Olet.
President.
Counselor Pendleton.
President.
Counselor Cudero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Paterna.
Here.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Here.
Counselor Del Nicky.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Baboni.
Thank you very much. Under Mayor remarks, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone involved with organizing our Veterans Day ceremony last week, including Billy Carroll, who's the chairman of the Patriotic Commission. He's a Colonel in the U.S. Army, retired. The rest of the Patriotic Commission, guest speaker Jim McEntree, U.S. Navy, from 1966 to 1971. The American Legion Post 133, the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department, the high school munitions musicians, Ben Bolduc and Noah Mahiro, who played taps, and the South Windsor Community Chorus. As you all know, Veterans Day is one of the most special holidays during the year. It's intended to honor all the U.S. Military veterans, both living and deceased. I was privileged to attend the ceremony this year along with Representative Del Nicky, Town Manager Maniscalco, Deputy Mayor Paterna, former Mayor Del Nicky, and Counselor Cudero. Hopefully, I didn't miss anybody. And then all the members of various veterans organizations and other members of our community. Along with, now, I know Counselor Baboni's not here yet, but along with Counselor Pendleton and Baboni, can any other veterans here tonight please stand to receive our respect and appreciation with a round of applause? Any veterans in the audience? All right. The other thing under the Mayor's remarks is it's customary for the Mayor to read into the record various appointments, so I apologize, it's going to take a minute or two. The Budget Work Group, we have Counselor Paterna, myself, Counselor Del Nicky. Understanding Committees Audit, currently, we have Counselor King. Under Capital Projects, currently, we have Counselor Pendleton, myself, and Counselor Cudero. Under Energy, and I apologize for a misspelling in the thing I handed out, we have Counselor Olet. Ethics, we have Counselor King, Paterna, and Counselor Del Nicky. Insurance, we have Counselor Del Nicky and myself. Naming of Public Lands and Buildings, we have Counselor Fitzgerald, Deputy Mayor Paterna, and Counselor Del Nicky. Personnel, we have Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor King, and Counselor Del Nicky. Pensions, we have Counselor Pendleton, Counselors Cudero, and Counselor Olet. Agriculture, Arts, and Nature Center, we have Deputy Mayor Paterna and Counselor Olet. Under Council Liaison Assignments, we have the Board of Ed, we have Counselor Fitzgerald. Agriculture, we have Deputy Mayor Paterna. Economic Development, we have Counselors Cudero and King. Historic District, we have Counselor Olet. Housing and Fair Rent, we have Counselor Del Nicky. Human Relations, we have Counselor King. Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation, we have Counselor Del Nicky. Juvenile Firestarter Intervention and Prevention, we have Counselor Pendleton. Library Board, actually, we're still looking for somebody. Mass Transit and Highway Advisory, we have Counselor Olet. Parks and Recreation, we have Counselor Fitzgerald. Patriotic Commission, we have Counselor Pendleton. Planning and Zoning, we have Counselor Olet. Public Buildings, we have Counselor King. Social Justice and Racial Equity, we have Deputy Mayor Paterna. Water Pollution Control Authority, we have Counselor Cudero. Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Counselor King. Connecticut Water Advisory Council, we have Deputy Mayor Paterna. And Senior Advisory Board, first meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., I'm taking that one. So I want to thank all the counselors for volunteering for various groups. We do have some openings, and hopefully, we'll get those filled shortly, so thank you for that. And now, we have Adoption of the Agenda, Counselor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second by Counselor Pendleton. All right, any changes? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Okay. Just give me a minute. I'll read the small print. We're up to, I'm sorry, Communications and Reports from the Town Manager, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going off my written report, our Kerma reimbursements, I'm pleased to let the council know that we've received reimbursements from Kerma and private insurance carriers for the full recovery of expenses on the PD gate crash in April of 2025, and the electronic sign that was damaged on Graham Road in July of 2025. These reimbursements will make the town whole as it relates to these repairs. The welcome sign in town, after years of planning and work, the town, along with many private partners, has completed a new welcome wall on the northern side of town at Route 5 and Sullivan Avenue. Plans are currently in the works to have a ribbon cutting November 24th at 2:00 p.m. to officially unveil the sign to the public. The council has officially been invited. Town Council Academy, I wanted to recognize the council members who spent this last Saturday with the town staff to review the functions of the town, learn about the processes and policies, receive training on FOI, Robert's Rules, and active shooter security training. As a result, I'd like to provide those counselors who attended and completed the training with a certificate of completion that I'm going to bring up to you at the end of my report. In terms of my ICMA credential, I'm pleased to report to the town council that I've completed and submitted my annual credential. As you all may remember, there are 1,400 managers worldwide who have a credential, and it requires an annual 40 hours of learning. Over the next 45 days, my application for renewal will be reviewed by a panel of ICMA staff and managers who will recertify my credential. I'll let you know if and when that happens. Also, I know some of you already signed it, but there is the civility pledge on the dais in front of all of you. With the temperature increase and public discord, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities sent out and asked all municipal staff and officials to take the civility pledge. We have provided each of you with a copy of the pledge and are asking you to sign it and provide it to the council clerk so it can be submitted to CCM. I personally think it is essential to have disagreement in municipal government as it results in better outcomes. That said, it's imperative that those disagreements are thoughtful and respectful. And just for the public's knowledge and everybody else, I will read you all the civility pledge. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my town or city. I'm also pleased to let the council know that all of our staff, department heads, have already signed that, and those have been turned into CCM. A couple items that I don't have on my, or one item I don't have on my written report to all of you that we just completed, if you look at the back of the room, we have a new ADA system for individuals who are hard of hearing. That's an opportunity for people to gain access and be able to learn and hear our meetings if they do have an impairment. And with that being said, that is all I have for my written report. I know there's a lot more in the rest of the report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Counselor Pendleton.
Could we ask our folks to collect these?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report, Mr. Maniscalco. Just two questions. On page two, in regards to the Police Department, you may not have the answer. I was wondering where it talked about the civilian personnel summary where we have the vacancy, says that we have a field training who resigned on September 29th. Do we have any idea why? Was it financial? Was it personal?
I don't think it's appropriate to talk about personnel issues in a public forum. If you do want, I can ask the chief to reach out to you and explain that scenario for you.
Okay. The second question I have is just in regards to the leaf pickup. It looks like that started, did they come around more than once, or is it just the ones?
I believe this year, we're budgeted for two rounds throughout the town, so I'm not sure if they've completed their first round. I know, at least in my area, they've gone once by, so I think they're completing their first round or getting close to it. Hopefully, weather holds out, because once it does snow, it gets a little hard, so.
No, that was me. All I did was touch this, and it made that weird noise.
Okay.
I'm not touching anything anymore, okay? Man.
I would have been okay before the training on Saturday. Counselor Pendleton.
Okay. I'd just like to say thank you for the training on Saturday. I enjoyed my gold coins from the tax collector. I thought that was very sweet and very nice. And also, to have a library card, that was very thoughtful to give us a library card, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all the training that we've learned, and all meeting all the department heads. Thank you.
Our staff put a lot of time and effort into that training.
I'm going to shut this off, so if I make noise.
Okay. Mr. Maniscalco, I have a couple questions. So on the Police Report, I know I've seen a lot of public comment about the number of people speeding around town, going through stop signs. I think many of us probably experienced that, saw that during the campaign, we were out waving, and, you know, Four Corners, kind of interesting among other places. Avery and Kelly, I'm not really sure there's a stop sign there after standing there. The numbers that I see here, so almost like a couple hundred, a couple 200 in fractions in September, is this kind of a, maybe you could get back to us and let us know if this is kind of like an average month, or if we're seeing, you know, a spike in either how many fractions we're noticing, and how many people we stop, and maybe how we compare with other towns? Because we do appear to have a problem. I know the street that you live in, I cut through it almost every day, and I'm trying real hard to go the speed limit, and actually put my high beams on because there's a bunch of deers that cross almost every time I go at night, and you really can't go 40 and stop for a deer, you really need to go close to the speed limit of 30. But I seem to be the only one, so if you could get back to me on that. Let's see, a couple other things. When you do get a chance, there was an update here on the café, the gathering place at the senior center. Maybe I could just ask you, maybe you have the answer. They talk about the fact that they've fundraised $230,000. Do I understand correctly that that was all privately funded?
Correct.
Which seems like that's an amazing accomplishment so far.
Andrea has done an amazing job in trying to raise funds. She was extremely fortunate, we've had one donor in particular who made a very, very large donation that helped get us to that number.
Okay. Now, I know they really want, it looks like they have another hundred to go because costs went up, and I know they want to privately fundraise that, but I'm just going to ask the question since I'm sitting here. Do we have any kind of seed money for groups like this? I mean, we used to, in the past, have, what was that, small matching grant?
Matching grant.
Which is a really low amount, but we have a group of people that's fundraised $230,000. I mean, do we have access to, I'm not talking the majority of the hundred, but do we have access to anything that we might be able to help at some point?
Sure. So the matching grant was really for small, very small capital improvements. I think the total dollar amount you could get out of that matching grant was about $5,000. At this point in the town budget, we don't have a fund or funding available for something like that, but if we got to a point where we thought we needed additional funding, we'd probably go to capital and have some type of a capital request in there, because that's the place that would most likely go to.
Okay. And then my last thing is, I just have to take advantage, under the Park and Rec Department, they talk about athletic fields and grounds, and I said it in the meeting on Saturday, but now with the public here, I really do, as somebody who uses the fields virtually every day in the summer and has a program that uses it in the fall, there really is a difference in South Windsor. You can have a job, you can do a job, but they do an outstanding job. They go well above and beyond, and I know all our athletic programs really do appreciate that, but I wanted to take advantage. Does anybody else have anything for the Town Manager? All right. We're going to move on to public input, so let me just read the rules which are slightly different than the Board of Ed. So, public input shall not, and this is public input for items on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item, thank you, on the agenda. The speaker shall be limited to speaking to five minutes. The town, the clerk of the council will keep track. If you do hit the five minutes, I'm just going to ask you to, you know, try to finish your thought, if you could. The town council does not respond at the same meeting you speak to us, and I think the answer is yes, but is anybody here would like to, I think we go in order, so the first person is, and actually, the only person who signed up in advance was Tim Appleton, and when Tim's done, is there another list? Yep. So, Mr. Appleton.
Hello, my name is Tim Appleton.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tim Appleton, and I live at 161 Woodland Drive in South Windsor. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak before you tonight. On Election Day, voters across South Windsor cast their ballots, those votes were counted, and the result was uninvestakable. The people elected Harrison Amadison to serve on the South Windsor Town Council. Yet tonight, this council is not properly formed because Harrison is in the crowd behind me, rather than sitting with you all as a duly sworn member of this council, as voters plainly intended and have since been disenfranchised. As one of those disenfranchised voters, I want to be clear, it's wrong and dangerous for unelected municipal officials to decide who wins and loses elections. No administrator has the authority to override an election or silence the will of voters.
Mr. Mayor, you have a point of order?
Yep.
Where is that on the agenda?
It's in our executive session, so it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. This surpasses any political party, person, or personality. It's rooted in a core belief of our democracy that every vote must count. Backroom, retroactive, and unevenly applied decisions by unelected municipal officials that silence voters, discard ballots, and ignore equal protection principles are unacceptable. Sadly, what happened in this town hall is an abuse of the public trust. The entire state is watching us, and this must not stand. Thank you.
Harriet Amadison, Jr., 31 High Street, East Hartford, Connecticut. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on an agenda item this evening. As stated, on November 4th, which was Election Day, folks in every municipality across the state came out and cast their ballot with the hope that it mattered, right? On November 5th, an interesting situation unfolded here in South Windsor. Unelected town administrators decided that their voice mattered more than almost 5,000 voters here near town of South Windsor. This isn't about a person, this isn't about a party, this is about the people and their voice that must matter. As was stated earlier, this is a disgrace on the town of South Windsor, and those involved are part of that. It is my hope that as things done in the dark come to light, that justice will prevail, and the right thing will stand here in the town of South Windsor. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the council at this point on something that's on the agenda? Yep. Why don't?
I greet you, ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me. I probably should have been clearer earlier.
Yes, my name.
If you could give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Dr. Harrison Amadison. I reside at number 1475 Electon Road here in South Windsor. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, ladies and gentlemen. I will make it very brief. Rather than trying to reiterate what the gentlemen have said, I would like to just say that the council that we see here this evening is not properly constituted, that the unelected town administrators, with all due respect, picking winners and losers against the will of the people is unacceptable. I'm not speaking as a Democrat, I'm speaking for everyone. If it was the other way around, I would stand right here and speak to that, regardless of who the administrators are. With all due respect, what is right is right, what is wrong is wrong. Democracy, the government of the people, by the people, and for the people. The people should be able to speak, and their voices ought to be heard. Every vote counts, and never, never forget that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Why don't you go up in the front, and then we'll go in the back.
Thank you. Despina Begansky, 133 Cliffwood Drive. So I'm not going to disagree about the number of votes, and I apologize, I'm trying to find my notes here, the number of votes or anything like that, but one of the things we all did as a community is we voted on different referendums. I'm here tonight to express my deep disappointment with the recent lawsuit involving our town. At a time when South Windsor faces significant financial pressures, including major bonds coming due and a long list of capital projects this council wants to pursue, I have to ask, is this really the moment to spend taxpayer dollars on a lawsuit over a charter that was voted on and approved? The several sitting counselors helped draft. In fact, one of the strongest supporters of that very charter is now part of the effort to challenge it. This is not a responsible governance, this is not a fiscal stewardship, and that certainly does not deserve the residents who are already stretched by rising costs. The people of South Windsor deserve transparency, accountability, and leadership that puts community needs above political agendas. Instead, taxpayer money is being spent to advance a dispute that could have been avoided because those pushing the lawsuit are the same people who helped shape the charter. That is not just inconsistent, it's irresponsible. Shame on you for wasting taxpayer dollars on something that stems from your own agenda and your own work, so let's all remember this when we're discussing school budgets, lighted fields, park and rec, how you decide to spend our money. Our community deserves better than this. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive, here to speak on item 17. Right now, I think the town has enough lawsuits. There's five, if I count correctly, under the executive session item. We don't need another one, which is to push the town council from a Democrat majority to a Democrat supermajority. It's an expensive exercise which could get even more expensive if it results in a special election. This is too much for just already a volunteer work, let's move forward and work together for the town versus political jockeying for a position. Furthermore, in terms of the Charter Review Commission, we have two members of the current town council, sitting up here, who were members of the Charter Review Commission. We have two more who were pushing for it as well, to begin with, when it was passed in a hasty manner. And I stood up here three years ago and said, or two years ago, and said this would be a problem, it's turned out to be a problem, a very expensive problem. Let's remember the taxpayers. The taxpayers don't want fights like this. This is not an important fight, relatively speaking. We have four other lawsuits that need to be important, we've got other things in terms of budgets, in terms of senior center, in terms of lots of regulations and unfunded mandates that are coming down from the state. Let's put these other issues aside and work towards those. Thank you.
Is there anybody else at this time? There will be another opportunity later in the meeting. Why don't you come on? Come on up.
Chris Sands, I live at 80 Judy Lane. I'm also disappointed that we're in this lawsuit situation, which was completely avoidable. There were, the review committee reviewed the language, the town council reviewed the language, the town staff who were responsible, including people with legal experience, should have seen the obvious issue with when the enactment of these various changes in the charter were supposed to go into effect. in the charter were supposed to go into effect, could have acted on it sooner. But here we are now, we have to resolve because what they've chosen to do is implement some of those provisions by allowing selectmen and the town clerk to, or town treasurer, to go ahead and enter one set of rules and then using a different timeline for members of the town council. So they've created a problem that has to now be resolved in the courts. I think it's very unfortunate. I'd really like to see it resolved in accordance with the wishes of the voters. On November 4th, six Democrats were allowed on the ballot. Six Democrats mounted campaigns, paid funds, spent time. They're entitled to the seats that they won according to the way the people of the town voted. And to supplant the number six vote getter with the number 10 vote getter is a disservice and a disenfranchisement to the people of the town. Thank you.
Is there anybody else at this time? All right, thank you. And again, there'll be an opportunity later in the meeting. Let's see, item eight is adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Counselor Roulet?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the minutes of the previous meeting from October 20, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any changes to make? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I'm going to abstain. So I guess, Mr. Senate, can we have a roll call?
Counselor Roulet?
Yes.
Counselor Pendleton?
Yes.
Counselor Cordero? Deputy Mayor Paterna?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Abstain.
Counselor Delnecki?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Balboni?
Aye.
All right, we have eight ayes and one abstention.
Thank you very much. Item nine is communication for liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. Anybody? Okay. Number 10 is report from committees. Anybody? Item 11 is the consent agenda. Counselor Delnecki?
Thank you. A resolution appointing Lori Lynn Godette Jones as an alternate member of the library board to fill the new alternate position, which was approved by amendment to the library bylaws. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Lori Lynn Godette Jones as an alternate member of the library board for a term ending November 30th, 2029, and postpones consideration of this motion until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Balboni? Anybody have any questions or concerns? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, anybody? Any noes, abstentions, passage unanimously? I do have a question. Mr. Manoskaoko, I just haven't gone through this before. Anytime there's a change in party, obviously, some of the boards and commissions, the makeup changes, who's in charge changes, what are we doing as a process? And I guess, I know both town committees are going to bring forth people, but how do we make sure that we don't? I remember one year, I was added to Park and Rec, and then I, somebody had to resign like a month later, and I volunteered to resign, one of the multiple times I was on Park and Rec, because it was a switchover in the election. So how do we work the timing of new appointments? I'm not worried about this one, but we're going to get a number of them from both parties, I'm guessing. How do we make sure that we do it correctly, is my question?
I guess I'll take that on, in the sense of replacing chair people? Is that what you're asking about, in terms of boards and commissions?
Yeah, it's not just chair people. I mean, somebody might have had the majority on a commission, the Republicans in this example, and now, if they're fully stocked, somebody's going to have to go off, so a Democrat can go on, unless everybody agrees not to do that. But that is what happened to me, so I'm bringing up the example. So I just want to know, what, do we give a directive to both parties? Or, because I don't want to be the person when, let's say, next meeting, we get 50 appointments, at some point, we're going to have to delay it or say no, and isn't it better to take the initiative? And I just don't understand what the process is, so I'm asking.
Process-wise, it's just, as they present you names for substitution, you just take them on and appoint them. It would not be, you can't do that for elected officials, but you can do it for appointed officials.
Counselor Delnecki?
Yeah, it's usually when the term expires, so you have, you probably have a few on commissions expiring at the end of this month. So that person who's expired, that could be the spot that would, if it's a Republican spot, would go to a Democrat spot. If there's, if they're not expired, you can't force someone to resign because their term hasn't expired. So you've got a whole bunch of commissions that are staggered. Because Wetlands right now has one that's expiring at the end of the month, a full term. So that would be an open spot for a Democrat spot.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to Counselor Roulet, but can I ask the town attorney between now and the next meeting to take a look and let us know? I just want to make sure we handle it correctly. I don't want us, one of the first things we do to have to deny people, but I also want to make sure that we do it right. Counselor Roulet?
This, this has nothing to do with party. My concern is having enough people to establish quorums. We've had so many challenges with establishing quorums. I would prefer, before we-
Excuse me, Counselor Roulet, can you move your microphone?
Before we, before we move someone out, I would just ask that we have the appropriate party, in this case, the Democrats have a replacement in place, so we, we're not stuck where we've been for a little while here.
Totally understand. Again, if the town, town attorney can just look at that and get back to us, so we all get the information? Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Oh, Deputy Mayor Paterna?
If I could ask the town attorney, I think in terms of the chairs, however, I think it would be appropriate to ask committees not to select, do their official elections until, say, January, so all these positions can be filled, so we have the right makeup on each. And the only exception is planning and zoning, because they're elected, that's different. But all the appointments, could we ask them not to have their elections immediately in December? Because neither party is going to have people ready by the first meeting in December.
I was just talking with the town manager. It's going to differ from committee to committee based on how their terms are expiring or whether they're elected or appointed, like you just mentioned, Mr. Paterna. And then you also have to take minority representation rules into account as to how many of a majority you can have on any particular committee or board or commission. So it's going to really have to take effect as a case-by-case basis on each of the committees that you're looking to fill vacancies or replace seats with. But I'll, but I'll take a look at that with the town manager, and we'll get you a little chart, perhaps, of what needs to be done.
If I could correct what I said, it doesn't have to be by the next meeting. If it, if this is easy and it can be done in a couple days, but whenever you can get it to us. Thank you. All right, I think we're at item 12, unfinished business, which is Needaworfer Road Water Supply. Before we have a, this is a discussion item, so I'll turn to the town manager and the town attorney.
So basically, this is a discussion item that's carried over from the previous council. Mr. Stetson and I had been tasked with reviewing a couple of different options for providing some additional water resources on Needaworfer Road that would aid in potentially fighting fires. Mr. Stetson finished that memo, and we wanted to bring it forward to all of you as we had promised. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stetson, and then maybe he and I can answer any questions there may be.
Good evening, Mayor Zimmerman, and congratulations, fellow counselors, on returning to the council. I'm Vincent Stetson, Director of Public Works. I think the best thing to do is probably just walk everybody through this memo, so we're all on the same page. A little bit of background, at the town council meeting held on September 15th, 2025, a request was made for further analysis of potential water access on Needaworfer Road. Specifically, the council asked for an evaluation on the feasibility and process for installing a dry hydrant system on the town-owned open space land known as a wildlife sanctuary at 311 Needaworfer Road. In addition, the council requested a review of other areas in town where residences may be located more than 1,000 feet from the nearest fire hydrant. The permitting process for a dry hydrant installation, the first step would be town council action. The town council would initiate an 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for installation of a dry hydrant system within a Needaworfer Sanctuary located at 311 Needaworfer Road. At that point in time, the engineering department would become engaged, and upon referral, the engineering department will prepare the required documentation on behalf of the town council that includes preliminary site plans and system layout, proposed construction processes, the maintenance program. Following that, the planning and zoning will review. The commission will evaluate the referral under special exemption. The inland's wetlands will also review it in concert. The inland-wetlands commission will assess the project in accordance with Public Act number 11-184, which is an act creating a rebuttal presumption for the approval of inland wetlands permit for a dry hydrant. In layman's terms, that sort of paves the way for a wetlands commission to very easily rubber stamp this. A key challenge is the lack of an existing dependable water source, such as a Lake Ponder Stream, which may influence the commission's interpretation of the act. That's the only issue that I foresee. Otherwise, it might need a wetland permitting if we can leverage this act. I'm estimating that the duration of this permitting process would be about approximately 90 days at best. The construction process, once permits are secured, the Public Works Department, in collaboration with engineering and Parks and Recreation, will complete the following work in house. We would establish a roadside access with a curb cut, install a tracking pad for equipment staging, clear all the designated trees from the proposed pond area, install sedimentation controls and remove stumps, excavate the pond to approximately five foot in depth, install a liner to prevent seepage and porous soils, coordinate with the utility provider to install a power drop, contract drilling of a well to fill and maintain the water level, and install piping to allow drafting by fire apparatus. Best-case scenario, I estimate that this would take about four weeks. A lot of these costs could be borne by the Public Works Department performing the work in house, like the excavation. The tree removal, we have estimated at 10,000. Curb cut and tracking pad, the material is about 1,000. Pond liner material is $2,500. The well installation, I have a verbal quote for 300-foot depth. I talked with some well contractors that are intimately involved, that have history in the area, so they know how deep the water is and how deep the casing needs to be. Total approximate cost is $41,500. This estimate does not include long-term operating costs, such as the ongoing electricity for the well, potential issues of water stagnation, wildlife contamination, algae blooms of freezing, and pump replacement for the well every 15 to 30 years, depending on usage. Following this, I looked into the inventory of hydrants that are more than 1,000 feet from residences. The following streets contain homes located more than 1,000 feet from the nearest fire hydrant. That is Barber Hill Road, Barrel Road, Chapel Road, Foster Street, Foster Road, Lewis Drive, Long Hill Road, Mean Street, Needaworfer Road, Oakland Road, Overlook Road Neighborhood, Rosemary Lane, West Road, and Windsor Road. Some important notes. Homeowners are typically required to confirm fire hydrant distances on their homeowner's insurance decoration page during mortgage closing. This is used to calculate ISO ratings and risk assessments. Historical fire instances, incidents in these areas have not resulted in total property loss despite hydrant distances. The outcomes of such events are influenced more by factors such as fire origin, construction methods, and emergency responses than fire hydrant proximity. Some evaluations and conclusions. Needaworfer Road is not unique in its lack of nearby hydrants. Several areas throughout town have similar limitations, and fire mitigation outcomes are influenced by many variables beyond hydrant placement. While it's technically feasible to install a dry hydrant system at the Needaworfer Road site, the decision must be based on a thorough evaluation of all relevant data in broader context. Before proceeding, the town should weigh justification for investment in new infrastructure at this specific site, equity of service distribution compared to other underserved areas, and long-term maintenance and operational implications. This analysis was developed in consultation with the following town departments and offices, the Fire Department, the Building Department, Fires Marshal's Office, Planning and Zoning Department, and the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Stetson, for the presentation. I have two quick questions, and then I'll see which counselor wants to go first, but I just want to get on the record. You used a phrase that the previous town council asked for an evaluation of the feasibility of this. I'm assuming that means that this was their number-one priority of all the alternatives? I remember watching the meeting. This was what they said, hey, go back and get more information on this one specific?
Yes.
Option? Okay. And then, for me, as much for everybody else, and maybe it's here and I just missed it, can you tell us what a dry hydrant system is? I think I know, but-
It's a established pipe that has the fire hose connection that goes into either a well, stream, pond, something that is going to have a dependable water source for the fire hydrants to pull off of.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before I go through my list? Counselor Delnecki?
Sure. Excavate pond to approximately five feet depth, five-foot depth. That means a pond has to be created, correct?
So there is a, what looks like from arrow footage, an old irrigation agriculture pond across from the Burke residence. This pond has long since not been used. There's, you know, very mature trees in the indentation. The pond was about three feet deep. Currently, the dimensions of that pond are well over a quarter acre, so it's much larger than we would actually need. And in the case of, you know, keeping this thing charged with a well, we'd probably make it much smaller, maybe a tenth of an acre, five feet deep. That would give us about 350,000 gallons of potential water for any use.
And this is in the sanctuary property?
What is termed as the sanctuary property, it's also town open space. We've looked through the land records and the deeds. There are no limits or restrictions on use of this property at this time.
Okay, because that was, was that, I think that was purchased with state money, right?
It was purchased a long time ago, back in the 60s. I can't cite what the source of the purchase was at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pendleton, then I'm going to go to Counselor Roulet, and then Deputy Mayor Paterna, if I remember.
So I'm just going to follow up with that with the purchase. Should we not have some type of a land record here in town that shows if there's any restrictions? Or even back in our minutes of the council meetings, we'll talk about the purchase of the property? So I'm sure those exist somewhere.
I could go back there, but I have the deed right here. There is no limits to our use currently with this property. You guys are free and clear to direct us to have an 824 referral, which starts the process for using this town-owned property. If you would like, I can go through the records and find the source.
No, no, that's fine. I just was saying, because with the purchase of land in this town back in the 60s, there are minutes of meetings, of council meetings with the purchase.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not doubting you, I'm just saying, just as a reference. As opposed to taking a quarter acre of land that's water, wetlands, what have you, and turning it into a dry hydrant, is there not a possibility to just drill a well on the town property and have a FDC cap come out of the ground for the Fire Department? Am I not-
Yeah, the amount of flow that a pump would take, it would, it would not, the well wouldn't be able to keep up. You would have to create some sort of underground cistern, because groundwater isn't going to recharge into that small pipe fast enough to fill the truck quickly. These pumps pump, you know, I don't, not thousands of gallons a minute, but very, very quickly, as opposed to your homeowner's pump. So the idea of having the well is, you know, in the case of a drought, this well would perpetually fill the pond. Imagine your toilet has a float. Once the pond got too low, the well would turn on, fill the pond back up. So that way there, there's an inventory of pumpable water for fire service.
Because I read here about the freezing, you mentioned the freezing, and that's why I was just thinking, a well with an FDC pipe, you know how in buildings, they have those big Fire Department connection pipes that come out of buildings? Like out of a well, have one of those big Fire Department connection pipes come out of a well that's in the ground. I'm not an engineer.
Right.
Okay, I'm not doubting you, I'm not an engineer. I'm just saying, instead of- I'm just saying, instead of having an open pond that critters are using, who knows what's going to be in there? Who knows how they're going to filter the water for the fire department in their vehicles, as opposed to just going straight down to a well? Not an engineer, but I'm just...
That is a very good outside-the-box idea, but I fear a well that would be able to supply a fire truck in a time of need like that would probably be very, very expensive. You know, I'm envisioning like a six-inch diameter well. A well that would be able to pump that much water in a short amount of time would be feet in diameter, like a caisson.
And they have no aquifers up in that area for us to go down deep?
No, there's aquifers, it's just a matter of the pump being able to pump the water out of the ground without lowering the groundwater level in that small little section.
Okay, because I'm thinking a big pipe, not like a little, but a big pipe, okay.
To your point about the freezing, the dry hydrant, you know, it will take water from below where the ice is. To your point about wildlife, you know, there's two sides to every issue, and this would be an opportunity for other waterfowl and whatnot to have a spot to stop and have a drink. So it could be some tacit benefits to it as well.
So you're taking how many acres and making it into what acres?
There's about a quarter acre indentation there from the original pond. We'd probably take half of that and turn it into the dry hydrant pond.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Lett?
Is the pond located where the old pond was? There used to be a pond there.
Correct, yes.
So same exact place?
Same footprint, but different dimensions, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Paterna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stetson, thanks very much for all your work on this project. I think you've given us some really good options here, and I appreciate it very much. I like your presentation of the solution that we can make this work. It's just a matter of money, but I think we can try to find that somewhere. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councillor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is for you, Mr. Stetson, or if it's for you, Mr. Maniscalco, but when the town council, previous town council discussed this last time, we specifically had asked for an exploration of options three, four, five, and six that were presented to us. So I'm just wondering if this is, like, did you guys explore those four options, and was this the cheapest? Or are you going to be coming back to us with those other three that we had asked for?
I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I thought I was asked to do analysis on just this one. I can be more than happy to do further analysis on the other options, but those are prohibitively expensive, millions and millions of dollars.
Well, I know that there were, that there were, like, options one and two were definitely prohibitively expensive. The other remaining ones weren't, weren't as expensive as those first two. I don't remember anymore, you know, what the price difference was with the others, but I do know that the council did specifically ask for an exploration of those four options.
I think this is probably the most feasible option, when we talk about both cost and actual implementation. We certainly can dig out the other ones and get you some analysis on those as well, but we wanted to try to put our efforts and energy into the one that made the most sense for all of you to look at first.
Yeah, if we could just briefly, since it's a discussion item, you know, the first option was extension of municipal water main down Needaworfer Road. The second one, which the chief wasn't a big fan of, was the purchase of an additional fire tanker truck at a million dollars. The third one was the installation of an underground cistern. So think this pond, yet underground, much more expensive. And then the fourth would be installation of a above-ground storage tank, also expensive. And the fifth is a dry hydrant pond. If you guys want me to sharpen my pencil and invest the resources into sciencing all these other options out, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Let's wait until the discussion's over, and we'll see if we can get a consensus just so something happens. So I have a couple of questions. Page three, where you list the other thirteen locations, I mean, one of the discussions that we're going to have to have now that we have this proposal, I mean, I heard the, heard at the last meeting, the town manager, for one of the, one of the more expensive ones, and I totally understand why, said, hey, for one, it costs X. If we're going to do thirteen more, let's just, you know, just to get a rough number. But I think before we could actually vote on this, I think we have to have a little better feel, because once we do one, I think we're pretty obligated to do the others. And, for example, I mean, I have no clue, but I'm guessing, just going to make it up, let's assume that Needaworfer Road, what we're trying to fix is longer than the part of Long Hill that we're trying to fix. I don't know if that's a good example, but let's just assume that for the moment. We can't just take the forty thousand times attempts thirteen just to get a ballpark. How hard would it be? I also don't want to delay this six months while we have twenty-five meetings. Heaven forbid I have a problem. So how long would it take to just do a rough, but better than just a napkin forty thousand times thirteen? Something better, so we would know, are we somewhat committing two-hundred thousand? Is it a half a million? Is it more? Real rough price points.
Yeah, so this is a Pandora's box. Needaworfer is in a Goldilocks zone for solutions. We've got plenty of open space, an existing pond. There's nothing really holding us back from approaching the fix on this street. Looking at all the rest of these streets, the only option really is going to be to extend the water mains, which, just rough numbers for about a mile of road, you're looking at three to four million dollars, which the cost then gets borne by the users of the utility, not the town, and that is if the town could come and fund the whole project. My concern, and this is just from a personal point of view, is creating anxiety for all the residents on these streets, that now they're going to be worried that their house is going to burn down and that we can't, like, respond. And that's the worst thing I think you do for our residents, is create anxiety and worry that really shouldn't be there. Because again, the tragedy that happened on Needaworfer Road in July is an anomaly, it's unique, based upon all the factors involved in that one fire, not necessarily the fact that there's not a hydrant on that street.
Okay. Couple other questions, if we do decide to go down the road. So with this, or I guess to the town manager, I should have taken advantage. I got a phone call today from a major elected official in town. Again, they're doing the courtesy calls for the election, and the question was, what could we do for you? And didn't realize I should have asked for some emergency funds. I know we often don't qualify for state funds. Is there anything, would this qualify as, you know, some type of an emergency?
So the challenge with the, with water resources in the state of Connecticut, and actually probably even bigger picture, is oftentimes state governments will issue additional funds to municipalities for health-related water issues. Whereas you can get water because, you know, there's a contaminated water system, or wells are contaminated because of fertilizer, or whatever other reasons there may be, there's not funding sources associated with firefighting resources. I think the idea is that there are methods that are out there that fire departments can use and do use, including our own fire department for fighting fires in locations where there is not a fire hydrant. And those are considered acceptable by many of the powers-to-be, and as a result, I don't think you see a lot of funding associated with it.
Okay. Just to kind of get the legislative intent out in the record, Mr. Stetson, did I just understand you that the other examples, none of them are similar to this in the ease of the fix? So that for the other thirteen, none of them, we're talking millions of dollars for any of them, did I hear that?
Correct. You know, most of these locations are in very established, developed, urban-type areas without plentiful open space. The Overlook Neighborhood, for instance, is smack dab in the middle of town, so you would need to run water mains throughout that whole neighborhood. And we just repaved that whole neighborhood.
Attorney Krell, can I ask you a question? Just from a legal standpoint, if we were to do this, all right, do we have a pretty good argument if another road came back? Because they're so different, we haven't set a precedent that would require us to do any of the other ones? I'm just, I don't know if it's political or legal, but I guess I'm asking the question. If they were similar, I'd have more of a problem.
Right, I mean, I think it's your, you've done a good job of creating the legislative record there of describing the differences here. This seems to be a unique situation on this, this street in particular. The statute that Mr. Stetson referenced here does allow for the creation of a wetland pond for fire prevention purposes, and that doesn't seem to exist in other areas of town where it's more densely populated. So I think you're kind of, this is, this is the one-off, this is the exception to the rule.
All right, and I don't like to be that guy, but I'll just ask the question since we'll be asked it. Is it, to the town manager, is this something that if we go down that road, it should be fully funded by the town? Is this something that the other examples, the neighbors?
So from my perspective, I mean, if we wanted to do this as quickly as possible, your funding source would be the town. At this red-hot moment, in the budget that we're operating, we don't have the funds available to do that. If it was decided by the council that they wanted us to look at getting this done within this current fiscal year, we would need to identify certain projects that we're not going to be doing, and we would need to transfer those funds into this project. So now, we are going to be starting our next budget, and we'll start internally working on that in December. We can start that work then, if, and include this as a project for consideration amongst the, I don't even know how many other capital projects at this point there are, but there's quite a few, but it certainly can be put in there as a capital project that way as well.
Okay. All right, kind of a consensus, next steps, if we ask for a consensus and everybody says we want to go the next step, I'm assuming you're going to put something on the agenda that says we're going to do this?
Sure, so I mean, I think from a next step perspective, if the council is comfortable with the idea that Mr. Stetson's laid out with, that's one thing to know. And if the council is comfortable with that idea, then it's a matter of identifying funding. And I guess my question to all of you is, what is your feeling in terms of expedience and the desire to move that forward? And how fast a timeline are you looking for? Because, as I said, if we want to do it today, we got to decide what we're not going to do.
Okay. Councillor Pendleton?
Thank you. Adding up a timeline here, not adding up a timeline, forgive me, I guess it is adding up a timeline, the ninety days, and then going to planning and zoning, and inland wetlands, and here and that, and everything else. What is the grand timeline? Because right now, we're going into winter, so what would be the grand total timeline of this?
Assuming money's not a problem, we don't have to wait for the funds.
Right, just what would it be?
But it's like...
Six months?
Yeah, so let's, let's talk through it. Next town council meeting, you guys make an eight-twenty-four referral to the Planning and Zoning Committee. The following Planning and Zoning meeting, they will hear it, they'll refer it to Wetland and Zoning. That meeting will have to go through, they'll probably, each of those meetings will take two meetings, discussion item, vote. So right there, we're probably at about sixty days. If the tea leaves are showing that we're moving forward with this, I can start scheduling contractors once we find the money. You know, winters around here have been fairly mild, so doing the work in the winter might not be impossible. This could be done certainly by April.
By when?
April.
April? Okay, thank you.
Councillor Fitzgerald, are you okay? After hearing the description of the other ones, just going forward with this, having this one come back to the council? We still have to talk about it and vote, but not going through the others?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, it was a good question, but you're okay? Is everybody okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councillor Bellboni, I didn't see the light. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way. All right, the next item is thirteen new business. The first one is a discussion item, Amendment of Town Council Rules and Procedures, and this one was requested by me. Taking a quick look at the council rules, and I think it was Councillor Pendleton who brought it up to me, but I also noticed sort of the same thing. I think we need to do a little bit of work at a minimum, just taking the new numbers from the charter and just making sure that everything's been updated. I would like to, at some point when that comes back to us, take a shot at changing public comment, to go back to how I think the council used to be, that both series of public comments could be anything, doesn't it? You don't have to wait two hours to talk about something that's not on the agenda. You know, a bunch of us ran saying we wanted to hear from the public, we shouldn't have to wait for two hours. But, but the number-one goal is to clean up the numbering system, have it come back here, and then we can talk about if anybody wants to change any of the rules. So if everybody's good with this short discussion, I'd like to, I'm going to appoint Councillor Pendleton, Councillor Del Nicky, and the Clerk of the Council, Kathy Senter, as the three-person committee. Just so people know, normally, they'd be like two Dems and a Republican. I think we can start off with something that we don't need, you know, to be totally political, we're just cleaning up the rules. It'll come back to us, and then we'll have a longer discussion. So if everybody's okay with that? All right. Next item is number B, or letter B. It's the purchasing ordinance per Charter three fifteen of the town charter. This was requested by the town manager, Mr. Maniscalco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the charter passage at referendum, under Section three fifteen appropriations, purchases other than those made by the Board of Education shall be under such rules and regulations as may be established by a procurement ordinance, which may be adopted, repealed, or amended by the town council. So as all of you remember, kind of one of the precipices to looking at charter revision was the idea that we had a requirement within our town charter that made us go out to bid for anything over the dollar amount of five thousand dollars. Over the last, gosh, now it's probably four or five years, with the inflation rates and the cost of things going up, we've really struggled to be able to actually operate in doing that. So as a result, what we had been doing was we had come to the previous town councils and asked them to pass a resolution that up that dollar amount to twenty-five thousand, because there was a provision that allowed the council to actually exempt that purchasing requirement. Now that we've gone through charter revision, and it now puts in front of you the requirement to put together an ordinance, the, from my perspective, I think best would be for the council to pass an ordinance, because until that ordinance is in place, we're kind of running without any guidance from all of you associated with our purchases, and we do need to have that. Because as we move into the winter season, we're probably going to be looking at, you know, new salt bids, road projects, purchasing asphalt, there's a lot of large purchases that we need to get moving and get started on through the winter, so that way we can be ready for the summer. So we do need to start moving on this. When the resolution was passed by the town council, the last time, they did give us till January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So kind of the clock is ticking in relation to this. I put a draft ordinance from another community in your packet. I will say that there's parts of that ordinance that work for our community, there's parts of it that don't work for our community. We changed the name to South Windsor, just so that way you kind of got a flavor of what it might feel like if it were here, but please don't feel like all of that actually makes sense for all of South Windsor. For example, in that community, the one thing that really does not make sense is the finance department is actually shared between the Board of Ed and the town, and the town side. So that's a very stark difference, and that needs to be changed in the draft that we have. But there are some other portions in there that make a lot of sense, and I think would work very well. My hope is to have a more refined version in front of all of you at your next council meeting, that we can actually debate and discuss at length, with the intention of setting a public hearing, once you guys get to the point where you would have some kind of a final version.
Councillor Pendleton?
Is the draft ordinance within this purchasing document that you've given us, do I have the notes as budget policy? Is that it?
It says, it says purchasing on the very top. First section is declaration of policy, second section is definitions.
That's the budget policy. That's budget. That's different. So it is the one that says purchasing on the top?
Correct.
And it's the first declaration of policy, is what you're saying?
That's the first section at the top, yes.
Okay, that's, but your draft ordinance that you gave us from another town, is that included?
That's, that's what this is.
That's what this, oh, I see, I understand, okay. So you're going to give us, you're going to fine-tune and...
I'm going to fine-tune this a lot further. My hope was to get something in front I'm going to fine tune this a lot further. My hope was to get something in front of all of you so you could start really thinking about this and preparing yourselves for the conversation at our next council meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
So, Mike, just, or town manager, just a question. Do we need to put together a committee? Or are you going to take the initiative, take another shot at that, come back to us, and then we'll figure out how we proceed?
Right. So I've already had some conversations with the finance department about this ordinance, this draft, and we've got a couple ideas we want to talk through. I have a couple different departments I actually want to work with in terms of getting some additional revisions in here, particularly public works since they make such large purchases and do a lot of RFPs on a regular basis. So I want to work with those departments first, get this refined so the department heads are on board with it, and then get it actually in front of you as a final version. My hope is to do that by your next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. You're sitting right next to me. Counselor Del Nicky, my fault.
Just a quick question. I know we've got two meetings in December and two in January, and that resolution expires at the end of January. Does say there's some delay? Will we have to do a short resolution to extend that other one just in case this gets delayed?
I don't know if we're going to actually do that. I think, because the way the charter is written now, it provides us with flexibility to basically, until this ordinance is passed, the town staff could almost purchase things however they wanted to. My personal opinion is until an ordinance is put in place, we would probably follow the same guidelines as what was provided in that resolution until we actually get the ordinance in place.
Even if it goes past January 31st?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody good with moving on? All right. Item C, discussion item, budget policy statement. Again, Mr. Town Manager, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So annually, you know, we start our budget, the town staff start our budget typically December timeframe, late November. I've already had some department heads coming to me asking me what thoughts are for the upcoming budget and how we're going to do that. One of the documents that I look to when creating the budget comes from all of you, which is the budget policy statement. And that's your opportunity to put down your thoughts, ideas, what you would like accomplished out of that budget, what you're looking to kind of do, if there's any special initiatives, things of that nature. And that's the big overarching policy document that we use internally here to actually guide us as we put our, our budget together. We provided you with a copy of last year's draft, last year's budget policy statement. It's been kind of massaged and reworked over a few different councils at this point. Every council has some different things they want to put in there, but we do need that document to help us with moving forward in terms of getting our, our budget moving.
Okay. Thank you. My intent was to have the same people that are going to be on the, what's the budget work group, which was Deputy Mayor Paterna, Counselor Del Nicky and I, be the group of people that would work with you and then get something to this group. And I'm guessing, this is always unique to me, you're already starting your budget process and we haven't given you an update. And I understand there's an election, but it's kind of a interesting timing. But we need to do that right away, obviously, if we're changing something.
So I've, I've held those departments off at bay to date, but they're, they're ready to go. So, you know, I'm happy to help you in terms of getting that policy statement together if you need, but we, it is something that we are going to need sooner rather than later.
I know the Clerk of the Council will have a, a meeting organized extremely quickly, well organized. Counselor Pendleton?
Mr. Maniscalco, I'm not going to, I'm not quite sure how to put all this in words correctly. So follow me, please, for a minute. A budget policy statement is the point and the purpose of what? The definition is what? What is the meaning?
The budget policy statement basically identifies the direction that the council is giving to myself in terms of what you are looking for in your budget that I will present to all of you.
Okay. So should the budget working group be prepared or all of us be prepared for, before writing this budget policy statement on what the financial impacts are going to happen next year? Because we've had referendums that passed that are new to the system. A lot of new changes, maybe some salary increases, I don't know. But we can't make a statement, oh, we're not going to spend any money, you know, zero tax increase because we have to pay for referendums and bonding or what have you. So is it best if you present to us financially some gist of a broad picture and then a better budget statement can be written to help guide that?
Right. So I understand where you're going. I, I think in terms of the financing picture for the community itself, you know, that is one of the buckets that we present to all of you. That, that kind of sets, sits separately and distinct outside of the town budget. That's a separate, it's a separate own, you know, debt bucket. So the policy statement doesn't really talk to that all that much. The policy statement's more like, we're looking for you to promote public safety. We're looking for you to promote parks and recreation. We're looking for you to promote a community that accomplishes X, Y, and Z. So we're, we're less looking at the dollars and cents at this point. We're looking at the big picture initiatives that all of you are trying to accomplish. To answer your question, in terms of financing, particularly in terms of the referendum questions that happened, you know, a lot of those projects won't start for several, several months or maybe even up to a year due to the design phases and things like that. And I think as many of you who have sat on the council for a while know, as those projects continue, we don't actually issue the financing on those projects till they're done.
Right.
Because we don't ever want to overfinance something or, or issue debt and then not actually spend it because there's penalties that can come along with that. So that debt doesn't get issued for many, many years, so that actual tax impact isn't going to happen for quite a while.
I mean, we just had a conversation about water down certain streets in town. And you used the word capital improvements, and capital never gets funded. And, forgive me, it gets funded very little. So maybe, is there a way to focus on that in the budget in this statement that we're making to, for infrastructures within our community or along those lines? I mean, I'm just grasping everything that we've even talked about tonight and funding it tonight and bringing it forward to capital and.
So if the council wanted to address something like that, you would probably have some type of a bullet point or item in there that says, you know, the council would like the, the town to focus on, you know, infrastructure enhancement, infrastructure maintenance, infrastructure improvements,
Got it.
Things of that nature. Or you could even get more specific related to, you know, even the issue associated that we talked tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So everybody good?
Sooner or better.
We have, we have a work group and it's up to us to start the process and get the town manager something.
I, I mean, my thought is.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. My hope would be by the end of December, you guys have a final voted on budget policy statement.
It should be done before that. Well, the goal is hopefully before that first meeting, hopefully in December. Item D is discussion item, potential effects on state or national program cuts and impacts to residents. Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this discussion item was actually just in regards to everything that's been going on, including the shutdown, what have you. Mr. Maniscalco, if you know of any, you know, one minute, the cut, the, say for SNAP, for example, one minute it wasn't supposed to come, now it is, who's going to pay for it, so on and so forth. But specific to South Windsor, are there things that you've noticed? Obviously, we have a tremendous Health and Human Services Department, which has done phenomenal work. But are there other things that we should be kind of bullseye, if you will, to, to say, okay, let's make sure that we're looking at these items?
Sure. So first, I think, I, I, I'm pretty sure I sent this email forward to the entire council, but I think I'll just read it for everybody just because I think it's great to highlight the great work that our Human Services Department did. So the email's from our Human Services Director, Andrea Cofrancesco. "We made it through a very nerve-wracking time for people with the government shutdown, thanks to the support of the community. We were overwhelmed with the amount of donations that were dropped off and mailed using our Amazon wishlist, and we expect more food donations from local businesses and organizations that are still doing food drives for us. The past two weeks, we had back-to-back appointments for our food bank and we gave out gift cards in addition to food. We're also helping residents in our fuel bank due to issues with the state confirming pricing for oil. We did a drive-through food event for SNAP recipients, but only had two people to advantage, two people who took advantage of it because SNAP was fully funded. We also responded to government employees who were working without pay folks who have not used our services, but were trying to figure out what was available in their nest egg, was, as their nest egg was depleted while waiting for, while waiting to get paid. So I think we're over the hump and I love this community." So I mean, from our Human Services Department, they did an absolutely excellent job. And I know a number of staff throughout the government shutdown actually had a lot of conversations about making donations, how we can make donations to help people within the community and things like that. One of the items myself, that I personally have been watching a lot of our grants and the funding of those grants. Fortunately, I think when you look at big picture, long-term pass-through grant, most of the grants we get are pass-through from the federal government through the state to the town. Those processes are a lot longer than the government shutdown actually is. So there, we haven't heard of anything that hasn't come through. There was one small grant that we were slightly concerned about. We've kind of watched and looked at. Everything that we've been told is, it's going to come through. It shouldn't be an issue. Everything's going to work fine. Big picture, you know, these are long-term things, as I said, that we turn a lot of paperwork in for a long period of time and then eventually those funds come in. I don't foresee issues. We haven't been reported any issues. But as soon as those issues do come through, if they're sizable and substantial enough to raise concern, we would bring them forward to all of you to let you know immediately.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fitzgerald and then Counselor Pendleton?
Mr. Maniscalco, you mentioned the low-income heating assistance program. Was that, that was canceled though, wasn't it? Aside from the shutdown, was that, I thought that was completely canceled in the budget bill that was passed over the summer by the feds.
I'd have to go dig and make sure that's what happened, but what I can tell you is our Human Services Department has done a yeoman's job in terms of meeting the needs of everybody, so.
Yeah. Do you know how many residents we, do you know how many residents we have that, that make use of the lie heap funds?
I'm sorry, say that part again?
Do you know how many residents in town use lie heap?
I, I don't, but I can get that number.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. On our town website and, or a link to South Windsor Human Services, I know on our town website, there's going to be stuff a truck, or stuff a cruiser, or something, a food collection at Stop &amp; Shop and Whole Foods coming up. I'm not sure of the date.
So typically, our Public Works Department will do a stuff a dump truck, pretty much. And then our Police Department will also do stuff a cruiser typically.
Yep, and that's on our town.
I think the Fire Department may actually do something as well.
Is that on our town website?
Those all are coming up and those will be advertised on the town website and social media and everything else.
And I have always said the town of South Windsor has generous hearts and we are an amazing community that help each other out and pitch in. And I just thank you. Thank you, South Windsor. Be proud of ourselves. We do good.
Deputy Mayor Paterna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, I'm going to sound like a broken record. I'm sorry. I apologize to my colleagues here. But, you know, every time we think about SNAP and the fact that SNAP funds were cut off, $160,000 is spent every month in this town by SNAP recipients. That's $2 million a year. That people in this town need food help because they have food insecurity. So my concern is, and we have great organizations that are always doing food drives. That's not the problem. I see the problem is, what about the facility? Do we need to expand that food bank area? Do we need to look at facilities so that Andrea can collect, in fact, all this food that's coming in? I know she's storing it at other places right now.
Right.
So that's part of this issue that Counselor King raised, you know? We need to be prepared not only with the food donations, but do we have a place to store them? Do we have a place to serve hot meals? I mean, those are the kinds of things for future that we should be looking at at least.
Right.
So I just want to put that out there for everyone to think about. $2 million a year in this town spent by SNAP recipients.
Right. I, I know a number of our council members, as they've come on our town tour, I think when you get to Human Services, almost every time I've been there and you're in the hallway outside of the food bank, half of the storage is actually in the hallway outside the food bank. I know Andrea's done an excellent job at working with our community partners, at getting extra storage at local churches and things like that. It is a very good point to, to take though, that maybe there is some conversation that needs to happen around possible expansions to our food bank as it is. I, I did want to follow all of this up with one other item that I'm sure Andrea would yell at me for if I didn't mention it. And that's the idea that we're currently in the season of giving, so we all give our food and make our donations now. The time when they need it the most is in August. You know, in the middle of the summer when there's not those donations coming in, when people are really, really struggling. And I've been in the food bank when it's almost empty. So it happens, you know? So I think that's an important point to remember, that it's not just now, it's in the summer as well. It's in the fall. It's in the spring.
Okay. I just had a couple things, then I'll go to Counselor King. You know, just to add to the list, I guess, if, if you could try to put together a list, like I, I believe, I'm a little bit out of the loop now, and I apologize if I'm wrong, but I believe the Board of Ed has already lost just under $100,000 special ed-related, and that happened months ago. So I really would wonder, like, if there's any cuts that have been made to the town. This is, has nothing to do with the shutdown. And one of the big areas that I don't think anybody's brought up yet is, you know, luckily I'm on Medicare, but people that pay for insurance are going to, a lot of people are going to see a hit. No blame to anybody, but it's just the reality. I know when I made calls during the, the election, I heard from a number of people just, you know, how much on the edge they are, one paycheck, one referendum passes, you know, some small amount could really be a problem. And I know individually, you know, the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, United Party, people are doing stuff which is great. Is there anything, and you don't have to tell us today, but is there anything that the town council can do? You know, we have a whole bunch of people that come to meetings, you know, do we, you know, do we have a food drive at every meeting? Do we do something, you know, to help the community? We have a bully pulpit. We're using it tonight. But is there anything else that we can do? You know, I just know, and my mother passed away a few years ago, but she lived, I think it's like $1,100 of Social Security. We have a whole bunch of those people in town with no pension, no job. So 50 bucks, $100 obviously makes all the difference in the world. Counselor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the only question I really had was in regards to, and this has been going on for a little bit, especially in regards to our youth. I know, and I'm just reading Andrea's comments in regards to counseling, parent education, that, that five kids on the waitlist and Robin is actually leaving her role after five years as a clinical coordinator. So we're going to have an opportunity. And one of the last things she says is that although we no longer have a parent educator thanks to DCF Enhancement Grant Funds, we have contracted Services of Peace at Home Parenting Incorporated, which is awesome. I'm just wondering, because she, I know she says that she's going to share news of a, a new coordinator next month. Do you anticipate anything standing in the way of that clinical coordinator, whether it's finances or whatever, that may be needed in times such as this?
Right. So I mean, we have the funding available for the positions. That's not a concern. I think the challenge, in all honesty, is finding somebody to actually fill the job. That's, that's been our bigger challenge, is finding the people with those licenses and qualifications. Particularly in social work and, you know, people who can do counseling and things like that. I would say I'm rather proud of our community and the idea that when you look at the way other communities have spent funding, particularly associated with the COVID funds that we all received, we're one of the only communities that I'm aware of that ever put any money towards mental health. And we funded a ton of counseling for a ton of kids in our community. And I think that goes a long, long way. And I'm very proud of that. We, we ended up doing that. So. But I, I am. But I am not aware of anything that's going to stand in the way of us getting that new position filled beyond just finding the people to be in there, so.
Is this a full-time job?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had one other quick question. You brought up the health insurance and, you know, the potential expiration of the ACA grants and all that stuff. Have you started looking at all or contemplating what the impacts might be to, like, the town health insurance rates if those subsidies start to go away? Because once those prices start to go up, everyone's prices are going to go up.
Right, so we bid our health insurance out for the staff on a regular, on, I think it's a three-year revolving basis. I want to say we bid it out last year. I'd have to get you the exact date for sure, but I want to say it was not that long ago. So we're kind of locked in where we are right now, but I can certainly get you more information on that.
Okay. The next item is Item E, discussion item, Town Strategic Plan and the Town Council's Goals and Objectives, and this one was mine. So just for the public, I just kind of want to be clear, the town's done a great job, I'm guessing, on putting together a strategic plan. A couple of years ago, they went out and hired somebody, and, you know, it's a lot of detail. What I was looking for, and this is, I got to take the Board of Ed hat off at some point, but the Board of Ed always has like a rolling three-year strategic plan, and I like the fact that it's three years, it's not two, it's not based on the election, but it's, here's what we want to get accomplished, and the other, so I think they've done a pretty good job at coming up with the, you know, like, what's success? Over the next two, three years, you know, we know we're going to have to talk about the Park &amp; Rec building, we know we're going to have to deal with 400 more kids at the high school, we know, I mean, there's, we know, we've got to find a solution to Geisler's. I don't think any of those are controversial or unexpected. I'm guessing there's, each of us would probably have something that we'd like to add to the list. I'd like to see us figure out how to hire more police and get fully staffed, but there's a whole bunch of stuff. So obviously, I'd love to see us have a discussion and then narrow down the list, but then, big part of it is selling it, all right, to the public, and that's something I think that the Board of Ed does really well, because they distill it in a way, it's not a 25-page document, it's, you know, it's a trifold. And I know Town Council, there's more departments, I get it, it's not apples, you know, it's not apples and apples, but I think we could do a little better job when it comes budget time, especially if we're having a discussion about keeping something in, it's always good to say it was in our strategic plan, which we passed, we had a public hearing, we gave all the residents a chance to talk about it and give us input. So I'd like us to kind of think about that, and I am, you know, I didn't even form any kind of group, I guess, you know, as next steps, you know, if some people are interested in being part of that process, I had everything else scripted out, I didn't script that. So if people want to let me know, and we'll put together a work group, and obviously we'll work with the administration to see if this works for the town side. Counselor Lett?
Thank you, Mayor. It sounds very similar to what, so Planning and Zoning has to do, the P O C D, Plan of Conservation and Development, every 10 years. We just did ours two years ago, I think, or last year. The amount of work that goes into that is incredible, so it's not a, this is not a 60-day thing, it takes a while to get input from interest, all interested parties, including the community, and then that becomes the guiding principle or the guiding light for all of the decisions that we make going forward. So I think we do need to relook at this and.
Right. You know, and as an example, you know, before we got, before we actually had world language in the schools, before we had everybody have a computer, before, I'm not sure what else, that was in the plan. It took us two or three years to actually get to it, but it was, that was the goal. And again, I think it's apples and oranges, but maybe not, maybe the same thing could work here. All right. Turn this over.
Thank you. Our next item is Item F, Counsel Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Resolution approving the 2026 Town Council schedule of regular meeting dates. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the 2026 schedule of regular Town Council meetings attached hereto as Exhibit A.
Second.
There a second? Anyone want to add any meeting dates? Okay. Any discussion on the meeting dates?
Yes, is there any conflict with any major?
I don't believe so, I think they've already adjusted for the President's Day, for instance, yeah, it's already, those meetings are moved to a Tuesday automatically. Okay, so we're all set. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Item G, Counsel Pendleton?
I'm not touching it, sorry. Resolution approving tax refund badge number seven for 35 refunds totaling $14,641.90. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves 35 tax refunds, the total of said refunds being $14,641.90, as more fully described in Exhibit B.
Thank you, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? All right, thank you. Item 14 is passage of ordinance, and we do not have any. Item 15 is public input for any matter. Anyone would like to speak to the council at this point on any matter, not just items on the agenda? Yes? Just please give your name and address.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mary Beth.
Hit that button. Got it, thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mary Beth Lannan, I live at 369 Needlewerfer Road here in town. I have three things that I want to bring forward and that I'd love you to hear. I agree with Mayor Zimmerman regarding food insecurity, it lives well beyond the holidays. And I was thinking, and it's a dangerous neighborhood sometimes, however, is there an opportunity for us to engage local businesses to participate in a roundup opportunity? I get hit a lot for roundup opportunities, whether it's an online purchase or this or that. So if your order is $12.87, do you want to round up to $13? It could be low-hanging fruit, pardon the pun, but low-hanging fruit that could be diverted to supporting people with food insecurity, so thinking about that. Number three, or excuse me, number two, I just want to, thank you for continuing to pursue a resolution for the Needlewerfer Road residents to help us with, I guess, I'm going to say fire prevention, but in the unfortunate incident of having something happen like Mr. and Mrs. Burke at the Burke Farm, just having us continue to pursue a solution is very much appreciated. And my third point, I think, is, I mean, they're equally important, but from my heart and a person that wears a woman's skin, regarding the matter about the voting, a woman's right to vote was established 105 years ago, and I cast my vote religiously every year because I think one vote can make a difference. I just want it registered here that I'm really quite disappointed with the way that my one vote ended up netting out. But nonetheless, I just want to thank you for the forum, your time, and the good work.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
As we listen to the explanation of what they want to do, which is great, but how will that affect us, a few of us that are down further toward East Windsor? It's not going to work. They couldn't get the water from Chase Farms to the Burkes, how are they going to get it from the sanctuary to where we are? It's something to consider, possibly putting in another pond somewhere further down, but it will never get to our house. They couldn't pump it, they're not going to be able to pump it from the sanctuary, so that's all I wanted to say.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak to the council at this time?
Takes a while to write Needlewerfer.
Sierra Yanaway, 139 Kent Lane, South Windsor. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to speak tonight. I've been listening closely to all of the concerns raised by my fellow residents here in town about the potential costs that the town may face because of the actions of some unelected municipal administrators. The inconsistent and retroactive application of the charter revisions have disenfranchised thousands of voters here in town. I would ask the council and everybody here a very simple question. What price is too high to defend our democracy and the right to vote? Others may see it differently, but for me and so many, our right to vote and our system of representative government is priceless. As Sally just said, we women had to fight for the right to vote, and we have only had it for just over 100 years. This is a cherished part of our democratic process. It is worth recalling Benjamin Franklin's warning at the close of the Constitutional Convention, when he was asked what form of government the delegates had created. A republic if you can keep it. Keeping it, preserving a republic, our democracy and the sanctity of our vote requires constant vigilance and active engagement from all of us. I'll say this plainly, debating whether it costs too much to defend democracy, just a week after Veterans Day, when we fought to honor, when we honor those who fought, bled, and gave their last full measure to protect, that very right runs counter to the sacrifice we claim to uphold. I would also like to add that in light of the ongoing court case, that I think it would be only ethical if the counselor in question recused themselves for the duration of the court case and did not participate in any official town business. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? No? Okay, thank you.
I think it'd be a dangerous precedent if we're just asking one member of the Town Council to recuse himself, that person was just, I think, listed in a lawsuit for notice purposes only, but if we're going to go about that way, I think we also need to recuse the mayor, who was one of the original members of the Charter Review Commission. We need to recuse Counsel Paterna, who is the chairman of the Charter Review Commission. We need to recuse Liz Pendleton, who is mayor, who put the commission into place, as well as Steve Cordero, who was a member of the Charter Review Commission. Thank you.
Excuse me, that's Counselor Pendleton, thank you.
My apologies, Counsel Pendleton.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the council at this time? Okay, we're up to Item 16, which is.
Mr. Mayor, I have to read into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry, thank you. We all received an email from a citizen that can't be here this evening, I'm sorry, it was sent to myself and Kathy, and she forwarded on to everyone here. As a follow-up to the previous meeting, I request that you read the following into the record. My name is Al Larson, I live at 46 Jock's Lane. As a follow-up to the previous meeting, I would like to speak on what will mean, it will mean to have a new recreation center at Nevers Park. Now that the town has been successful in the recent vote, it is time to determine what is next. Our new leaders on the Town Council will say when and how we start, exact location, architects' designs, and eventually the time of a referendum, preferably soon and at a time when the question will be the only one on the ballot. This facility will be our most-used building in town, measured by hours of use. It will exceed Veterans Memorial Park by a factor of seven, and this does not even count for the exercise and the fitness area, as well as the all-purpose community center. We look forward to our effort beginning soon. Thank you, Al Larson.
Thank you. Again, one last shot, anybody else? Okay. Item 16 is communication from the Town Council, does anybody have anything to add at this point? All right, Item 17 is executive session, I'm going to ask somebody to read it in a minute just for the public, that'll be the end of our public meeting, we will close the meeting after the executive session. Can somebody make that?
Want me to make a motion?
Yep, Counsel Donakie, thank you.
Okay, motion to go into an executive session from 17A, per Connecticut General Statutes 1-206, capital B, strategy in negotiations with respect to pending claims and pending litigation matters, including Shank Road claims, Amadisom versus Town Clerk, Laporte versus Police Chief, Broadridge Output Services versus Town, Centurion Holdings versus Town, and Town versus Rincheck. I missed that wrong.
All right, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
And we need to invite Town Manager Michael Maniscalco, Assistant Town Manager Mr. Roberts, and Attorney Corella.